We'll call to order this August the 21st, 2019 meeting the Franklin County Commission.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
President.
Commissioner Waymire?
President.
Chair Howard?
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President.
If you'd all stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Todd Miller of the Cherry Street Wesleyan Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, it's an honor to be here with you all here today. Thank you for inviting me. I've been here in this town four and a half years now, and I'm amazed at every time I get to come in front of you or the other leaders of this city, how you guys seek an understanding and seek Him to lead you. So, thank you for that. Let's invoke Him. Let's invite the Holy Spirit here to this meeting. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for these leaders. I thank you that they are called by you to do your work here in this county, and my prayer is that they continue to seek you. You know what's best for this county, so guide them and lead them. Help them along this way. May they represent this county in a way that brings glory and honor to you and helps to grow this county in your name. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Okay, takes us to correspondence and organizational business. Today, one item on that, consider approving a proclamation stating Franklin County is a community supporting breastfeeding. Erin, you want to come tell us a little about it?
Good morning. So, I am really excited to be able to be here this morning and to have this proclamation here this morning to designate our county coalition, Franklin County Breastfeeding Coalition, has been working really hard to gain this designation. And today, I do have here with me Brenda Bandi. She's the Executive Director of the Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition. So, this designation is one that is kind of stemming from that organization, and we've had a lot of great help. She's a great mentor, a great advocate, and we are really just excited to be able to be here. So, I don't know if you're able to read the proclamation? Do you have it in front of you?
Janet's going to read it.
Okay, awesome. Okay.
Proclamation 1904, whereas breastfeeding is a proven primary prevention strategy protecting both infants and mothers from a host of chronic and acute diseases and conditions and building a foundation for lifelong health and wellness. And whereas employers that provide workplace lactation support experience an impressive return on investment, including lower healthcare costs, absenteeism, and turnover rates, and improved morale, job satisfaction, and productivity, and breastfeeding is economical, providing its benefits at little or no cost, and providing a safe, renewable food source, especially critical during natural disaster and emergency situations. And whereas all major medical authorities recommend that mothers breastfeed exclusively for six months and continue breastfeeding for at least the first year of a child's life, yet breastfeeding rates continue to fall short of the nation's Healthy People 2020 objectives. And whereas Advent Health Ottawa is committed to providing maternity care practices supportive of breastfeeding as evidenced by their recognition as high-five for mom and baby hospitals. And whereas Franklin County has an active and effective local breastfeeding coalition, a local breastfeeding support group, and 25 public establishments supportive of mothers nursing, needing to nurse, and in public as evidenced by their participation in the Breastfeeding Welcome Here program. And whereas Franklin County has five employers who have received the Breastfeeding Employee Support Award in recognition of their high-level support of their breastfeeding employees, and 21 childcare providers who have completed a course in how to support the breastfeeding family. And whereas the Franklin County has built a culture of breastfeeding support through the above activities and has met all criteria established by the Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition to be recognized as community-supporting breastfeeding. Now therefore, the Franklin County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Franklin County as a community-supporting breastfeeding and encourage all citizens to support breastfeeding families wherever and whenever possible.
Thank you. Brenda has a little comments from the statewide perspective. If we could just let her come forward?
Do you want to gather your coalition then too, so they can see? Yes. So, Commissioners, thank you so much for putting this on today's agenda and for making this proclamation. We are very proud of the Franklin County for the commitment that you have for supporting breastfeeding families. This designation is a difficult one to get. As Erin and her coalition might attest, this has been work over two years to bring these sorts of things together. We have six criteria that a community has to meet, and there are only 28 communities in our state that have achieved this designation. So, you are a very progressive community to recognize it takes a commitment from the community to support breastfeeding. We tend to think of breastfeeding as an individual act that a mom wants to do, and in our state, 90% of women choose to breastfeed. That may be surprising to some of you. It's a really high number, but what we see is it's difficult for them to continue breastfeeding because of some of the barriers that they face, returning to work, for example, or finding a place in public to breastfeed comfortably. And your community has made it a commitment to support these families in all the environments, their childcare settings, their workplaces, public spaces, and it really takes a community to do this, and your community is doing that. So, we see this designation as a foundation for you all to build upon. And Erin and her coalition are going to talk for a moment about those six criteria and what your community has done to achieve this designation. So, congratulations from the Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition. I also want to mention that our partners are proud of you as well, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, the Kansas Health Foundation, and United Methodist Health Ministry Fund have all been a part of this project. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to take a few minutes just to highlight the criteria just a little bit more. So, we have our Franklin County Breastfeeding Coalition. We do meet regularly, and that is made up actually of a wide variety, including moms. We couldn't, obviously, we're doing this for them and couldn't do it without them, without their input. So, we have moms. We have also agency partners such as Ottawa Advent Health Ottawa, and still getting used to saying that. And then, of course, we have the representation from our local pediatrician's office. We have WIC department. We have life care, just to mention a few. So, we are trying to be a diverse group, trying to be very representative of our community, and really trying to advocate for, if moms choose to breastfeed, that we want that to be able them to meet their goals, just like any other goal that we have set out for parents. And this is just one way that we can support, parents can support really good health and good outcomes for them. Real quickly, I do want to recognize the companies and businesses who are involved in the Breastfeeding Welcome Here. You might see, if you go into businesses, you might see these little table cards, or you just might see the cling. We have these in our county buildings and several other businesses around as well, but it's the Breastfeeding Welcome Here program. We have businesses Aurora Coffee Company, which is actually in Wellsville, the City of Ottawa, Family Life Chiropractic, the Franklin County Government, the Franklin County Visitor Center, Hairport, the Ottawa Campus of Neosho County Community College, the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce, Ottawa Chiropractic Clinic, Ottawa Kansas Dentistry, Pomona Library, Advent Health Ottawa, Sutton's Jewelry, Brockway &amp; Brown Chiropractic, ECAN, The Farmhouse, the Franklin County Health Department, Health Partnership Clinic, Life Care Center, New House Construction, Ottawa Care Clinic, Ottawa Community Arts Council, Plaza Cinema, Ottawa Advent, or Advent Health Ottawa Pediatric Clinic, and Scott Construction. And then, again, just to remind you of the five businesses who have either met a gold or silver criteria for the employee-supporting breastfeeding award. And so, we were recognized, the Franklin County Government, Advent Health Ottawa, Life Care Center, ECAN, and then again, the Ottawa Campus of the Neosho County Community College. So, again, this has been a joint effort by all of our coalition members, and we really are excited to be able to have this designation, but really what it represents, a community that is coming together and supporting parents, supporting moms who are choosing to breastfeed and help them to meet their goals. So, again, we just want to thank you so much and thank you for your time today. If we could get a quick picture, would that be okay?
Yeah, let's make the motion stuff.
Okay, sure.
Are you okay? Okay. If there's no more questions or anything on this, I would look for a motion to approve proclamation number 1904 stating that Franklin County is a community supporting breastfeeding.
I'd be happy to make the motion to approve.
Have a motion or a second?
Second.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, let's take this public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, we do.
A citizen desiring to speak on items not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commissioner will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Norman?
Commissioners? Norman Woogie, 37 90 Pawnee Road. Why am I here? I don't want to be here either. There is more to your job than watching a clock and yawning. Last week, a person came here to complain and show pictures to his commissioner about his road. He was brushed off and told to take his problem to someone else. I have talked to the engineer before the rains came in getting culverts replaced that were plugged. One was replaced and was plugged very shortly after that, and his disgraceful mess left behind. Fifty years ago, the then-county commissioner came by our building site and asked where I wanted the covert set. Today, to this day, the covert is not plugged. And 20 years ago, Dave Vestal and me put one in. The engineer told me how to put them in. There's this, you have to keep that water flowing. You can't have it flat. Water slows down, drops silt. And the slime rock you buy is also a problem. In the year 2020, I'll be 80 years old. Take time and drive, drive by the land that I take care of and farm. It shows pride in my work. I pick up rocks on the county because I mow the county right away, as I do every year. County has better machines than me, and most of my tractors, as of the other farmers, are 40 years or older. It's a matter of efficiency and leadership and spending time in the field and being responsible. Things change, road closings and more asphalt roads, and that's for an issue next week. Thank you.
Okay, it takes us to the consent agenda. Items to date on the consent agenda that need considering and approved are tax change orders in the amount of minus $72, claim vouchers in the amount of $1,236,784.47. The commission meeting minutes for August the 14th, and the study session minutes for August the 19th. For a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That we approve the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, it takes us to items of business. Today, the first item of business considered to approve the recommendations for three new board members for the Ransom Memorial Board of Trustees. Derek?
Yeah, this is something that was on the agenda last week. As you all know, you appoint members to the Ransom Board of Trustees. My understanding, Commissioner Stottlemyre had some questions. To that end, I'm here to help answer them, and Matt Hein is also here as well. So, certainly ask any questions that you have.
Okay, first of all, all people on there are very good people that are nominated. I'm just, I'm asking more, more procedure than I am anything else. Okay, how many applications did we get?
We received one application.
Other than the three?
So, we put Janet and myself and our board members came up with a list of about eight names. We reached out to...
I guess what I mean is, how many people answered the ad?
One.
Okay, thank you.
And then, we came up with the remaining eight names. We vetted out each one of them. Three of them declined due to time constraints. Three of them accepted. Three of them filled out the application. Two be considered for the RMH Board of Trustees, and so those are the three that are presented here today for your consideration. The one individual that did answer the ad declined to move forward because he did not want to fill out the application.
He did mention all the people that was on the review board that you just mentioned that reviewed what you had?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the main reason I'm asking is, I know that things have changed. I mean, you know, it's not set up like it was before. This board is not your personal boss anymore, what I guess I'm trying to say. So, their main responsibility is only expenditures of the sales tax dollar run through the county.
They have to co-approve the sales tax expenditures that go through the county, yes.
Okay.
They also have the responsibility to oversee the quality of the organization, to make sure the material service lines are not stripped out of the organization per a very lengthy document, definitive agreement. They do have rights and responsibilities to hold Advent Health accountable to make sure that the community hospitals run in the same fashion, if not better than what they have had it in the past.
Okay, now, the board does have bylaws, right?
Yes, sir.
And have they been changed to recognize the change in their responsibility?
They have, correct.
You've answered most of my questions.
Okay, just put out there, the three members that will be going off that have served their, their terms is Diane Drake, Wayne Dudastat, and Phil Gibson. Of course, we want to thank them for their years of service on the board. The three people that we are considering today to replace them is Betty Boudreaux Berzer, Eric Dudastat, and Crystal Anderson. Have any more questions for Matt on this?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Have a motion as our second?
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number two, consider for approval, the fiscal year 2019 workstation rotation. Dustin?
Morning Commissioners. I think most of you have kind of seen this before. Every year, we bring in our rotation order that we try and bulk together. As you can see on there, our base systems are down $1.06 per system this year. So, I think keeping Dell in line with what we're trying to do on our, on our pricing, these are in line with what we've seen in years past as far as minimal hardware upgrades, trying to keep the volume as far as how many systems each year flattened out, or getting it more balanced out than what we've had in years past. We are a little low. If you just look at our numbers, we have approximately 205 total workstations. We're only doing 30 workstations this year, or just under 30 workstations this year. As we keep balancing that out, I think we will get there where you start seeing that number change a little bit to get to more balance. But before we do that, I want to get a formalized rotation plan in front of you for your approval. This is just the regular rotation as we've done in years past. For how it's divided out there on cost, I will go ahead and highlight, for all the departments that are part of the county general fund, those are funded out of my 505 hardware line for any overages that they want beyond the base system, such as extra monitors, or if they have special equipment requirements. Those are then funded out of the resale line and get charged back to the individual departments for those needs. A large portion of the amount coming out of the resale line is for district court and non-county funds that we also provide these services to.
Kind of dry, as you said, we do this yearly. So, any questions on this? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 workstation rotation.
Motion to approve.
Motion as our second?
Second. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre? Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, item number three, consider for approval, clean agent system repair. Dustin?
Unfortunately, on Saturday morning, David Lee contacted me that we had a lot of noise going on in our IT office, and I wasn't quite certain what it was. So, whenever we came in, it was the fire alarm for our computer room or our data center that was going off. Part of that, I was still trying to identify what caused it. Whenever we got in, there was no smoke, no obvious signs of any fire, other than that the suppression system did discharge. That's what this quote is about, is replacing those compressed gas bottles that release into that system, and also getting that system repaired, find out what actually happened there, and hopefully take care of if there was any sort of failures in the system. As far as the funding for this, Joanne has been talking to our insurance regarding that and believes that this will be able to go underneath that route. If not, I'm sure we'll be working with Derek on IT funds or annexed building funds for that. But right now, our primary goal is to go towards the insurance side first.
And, and we did something similar here a month or so ago. The reason we're asking for your approval is this is something we want to get done ASAP because we feel like we're a little bit exposed in our server room without having this suppression system. And so, we would like the ability to go ahead and do it, but K-Camp has said they will cover this. So, that, I mean, they've, they've definitively told us that. So, it, it could be the case that the county writes a check because we want to do it quicker than we can sometimes get through K-Camp, but they will reimburse us for that. So, this, this won't really be a county expense, so.
Pretty, pretty clear cut. Need to be done. Any questions? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the clean agent system repair.
Do we make that motion?
Have a motion as our second?
Thank you.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Dustin. Okay, item number four, consider and approve granting permission to solicit bids for the replacement of the jail roof. Brandon?
Yeah, so, we've talked about this quite a bit, just the condition of the roof on the jail. So, just looking for approval to go ahead and start gathering bids on that and see where we come out with a few more bidders. We discussed this at Monday's study session, and we told you we'd bring it forward today, and we're, we're doing just that, so.
How many companies do you know that do that kind of a roof, or are you going to be able to get it out to?
I know of at least two just off the top of my head, but there's, there's probably three or four other companies that I know that do this kind of work. There's quite a few up in the city for sure that do this, so we shouldn't have any issue getting plenty of bidders in.
Like Derek said, we discussed this at length Monday during the study session. So, this is just the next step to move forward to get some bids and see where we're at. Not any more questions on this. Would look for a motion to solicit bids for the replacement of the jail roof.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Motion in a second, Janet?
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Thanks, Brandon.
We have also, just so you know, per our conversation on Monday, we've reached out, and I don't know if you've actually gotten it scheduled, but the crack seal for the parking lot out there? Yeah, we're getting that scheduled, but we don't have a date yet. Okay, well, we're moving forward on that. So, we're hoping next week, weather provided, we'll have the drainage issue solved shortly thereafter, have a crack seal put on, and then, of course, in the spring, we'll go ahead and seal the whole thing. So, we, and paint it at that time. So, we think the lot is on its way to being in much better shape.
On that, Monday, we also, Susan talked about the leak out that threw some, and that insurance is being looked at on that. So, we did talk about that, too. Okay, what we had on this? Item number five, discuss and consider for approval adding communications director position and hiring for the same. Derek?
Yeah, this is something that we've talked about several times. The, the leadership team has been talking about it off and on for over a year. I, I feel like the county does so many things incredibly well. I'm proud of the operation that we run, and, and I frequently tell people that I would sit on the courthouse lawn and do my job for everyone to see, and, and I would tell my entire team to do the same. I, I, I just very pleased with where we're at. Having said that, one of the things that this organization doesn't do particularly well, and it's not our, it's not our MO, when I look at our personalities, like the county, we're not self-promoters. Like, I don't promote myself. You guys are very down-to-earth, meat and potatoes, like we work hard, do the best we can with taxpayer dollars and act with integrity, but we're not out there every day at parties telling people how good we are. We, we try to do the things that, that really matter. That being said, communicating with the public and letting them know, hey, here are all the ways that we are attempting to help you. Here are exactly how your tax dollars are being used. I think it is a very important function of government. And so, in terms of my personal views on it, that is really the impetus for me as the county administrator, thinking that this would be a great position. Now, you'll note in this room, I've got several members of the leadership team. These are all specific members who I think this position would help immensely. They're all in support of it. You'll note that not all of them are here. That in no way, shape, or form indicates that they're not supportive of it. In fact, of 18 members, only two of them voiced concerns. One of them wasn't a concern for the position at all. It was another staffing move we made, frankly. And then, the other one, I think, just needed a little more explanation as to what this position would actually do. So, it's something that the organization is vehemently in support of. I've asked each of the members of the leadership team here to be prepared to speak on how the position might help their, their department. I don't expect nor necessarily even want all of them to. I hope David will. He's, he's an example of a department that maybe could use it more than anyone, but so, so that's that side of it. The other side of it is, we are, my recommendation is to put this position over the tourism department. So, they would effectively be the director of tourism as well. Now, let me say from the outset, this is something that I talked to Susan about before bringing this to you. I took a couple calls on this yesterday. This is not an indictment on Susan at all. I've said repeatedly that Susan is doing an awesome job, and I firmly believe that. I think that this is going to greatly enhance Susan's ability to do the things that she's really good at. Susan is great at promoting tourism. I think this position will take the big picture, some of that off of her hands, take some of the budgeting stuff off of her hands. Some of the other admin duties will be taken off of her hands. In addition, one of the skill sets that In addition, one of the skill sets that we're requiring is digital. It's a digital skill set, some experience in digital marketing. And I think Susan herself would tell you that's not necessarily her forte. So I think this position would complement her extremely well in that regard. And instead of having to contract that out, would give us that presence. So I think that this is a position that I hope Susan and this individual can work together for a long time. Susan will sit on the interview panel for this position, as well as a couple other members of the leadership team. So certainly don't want it viewed as an indictment on that. The other thing I want to discuss that came up is the grade level of salary, and okay, how are we going to potentially pay for this? And I want to have a discussion that we always have at the board retreats. So bear with me, because you guys have all heard this. Just want to walk through briefly some of the personnel moves that we've made in the last three years and what the annual savings that we've realized on those moves are. So when I agreed to become the administrator, the board agreed to hire, to give me permission to hire a full-time finance officer. In lieu of doing that, I hired Janet. Janet agreed to do it at a far less salary than we would pay a standalone finance officer. In addition, we're not paying benefits on an extra position. That is roughly, and these are conservative estimates, but a $42,000 cost savings. We transferred dispatch under the Board of Commissioners. When we did that, we could have hired a standalone dispatch director, but instead of doing that, we asked Chief Robbins to be over dispatch as well as ambulance. He's done that. We also, at that time, gave every employee in dispatch a dollar an hour raise. After bringing Nick over, after giving those dollar an hour raises, we still realized a $40,000 savings there. Public Works and Solid Waste, we merged those departments. So Public Works basically acquired Solid Waste. When we did that, we were able to eliminate a vacant clerk three position. And instead of having a Solid Waste director, we now have a superintendent of Solid Waste. Total savings there, $69,000 a year. We've also made a few staffing reductions. We've had some vacant positions that the leadership team has said we can do without that. Maintenance technician is an example of that. Total savings, $139,000 a year. I've hired several new directors. I've hired David Lee, I've hired Joanne Nowatzky, I've hired Brandon Sands, hired Jamie Wilson, participated in the hiring of Pat Toth, our building official, and I've hired Tammy. Those, I believe, are the hires that I have personally participated in. When you compare what they're making versus what their predecessors made, cumulatively, that's a $15,000 savings that we are realizing. So you add all of that up, that's a $305,000 savings in personnel that we are realizing annually. Wasn't a one-time savings, we realize this every single year. In the 2020 budget, the board elected not to fill a position in another department that was coming vacant. That will be another roughly $50,000. So $350,000 a year in personnel savings is roughly what we're looking at. This position is a grade thirty, which is roughly between sixty and ninety grand is what we would pay that position. If we take mid to upper end of that, add benefits, maybe it's a $100,000 cost. But even if you give $100,000 of that back, you are still sitting at a quarter million dollars a year of annual savings, and you're giving the county a position that any number of folks in here will tell you we desperately need. And so by all means, to the extent you have questions, let's have a good discussion about this. But this is something we've discussed for quite some time.
And I don't think you touched on the possibly some of the funding from the transient guest tax being they will be working over the tourism, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, and I had that discussion yesterday as well. Given that this will be the director of tourism, we will be able to fund a portion of that salary. And technically, we could fund it all with TGT. We won't do that because the position won't work exclusively in tourism. But yes, that will, let's say we fund half of that, that lowers the ad valorem tax hit even more. And we know we have that in our TGT budget, so.
That was my question is how, because we've already said our budget, so then how do we add that at that point? But, and I'm looking at the requirements for the, what you're looking for, I'm like, holy moly, they better be ready to work hard.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot there.
Yeah, well, and certainly we won't settle. We'll make sure that we have someone who fits the culture and the personality of the organization. If you want to hear from anyone out here, please ask.
I've heard from several of them. I, I'll start out. At first, I had a little trouble getting on board with this. I wasn't sure that I was all for this. I did go and talk to some of the department heads myself and got their feeling about it. And as Derek said, they were definitely for it and saw a lot of the advantage to having this person on board. I liked it even more when we talked about the tourism situation and this person being a part of that and some of that funding being out of transient guest tax, I think is a good situation to keep down some of the other tax dollars being spent on it. So like I said, I have talked to some of the department heads, not all of them, but I got how they felt about it. And I think with the, after talking to them and with the tourism situation, I definitely think I can get on board with it without a problem.
I hate to put you on the spot, but Susan, would you make comment? I'd like to hear what you have to say.
I think now that the visitor's center and the county have had an opportunity to work together, we've really seen our tourism efforts have grown, and that's a positive thing. But it's more than one person can really handle. I think that the county really recognizes a need to better communicate with its citizens. And I mean, we're only as strong as our weakest link. Like we said, we're not out there, you know, raising our flag and cheering for ourselves. And having one central location where people know the information and having one voice communicate that information is very powerful. And it speaks for the entire county, and I think it would benefit every department. I also think that creation of this new position creates an opportunity to basically support both those needs. Anything else I can answer for you? I just really feel like, you know, having some kind of social media continuity, again, the unified voice for the county. I think that communication, public relations, and tourism, they kind of go hand in hand. I mean, you can't have one successful without the other. I just really feel that enable, having someone who can enhance the positive image of Franklin County is going to benefit everybody. And I think I've really felt like collaboration is so important in my job, and I think it's important as a county. I think this would have some kind of unifying factor. I really feel it would make us more of a team instead of individual departments.
You have a gentleman that works on your website, would that position, would we no longer, or?
Potentially, I mean, that's one of the many things we would discuss. I think depending on the candidate that we get and what their specific skill set is, those are things we'll take a look at. I guess depending on who you're referencing. Are you talking about Lee Stadler, or are you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, and to Derek's credit, you know, we kind of, we've had an opportunity to talk, but without really knowing who the candidates are, and again, like Derek said, their skill set, you know, he did indicate that I would be a part of the process as in terms of how it would be handled at the visitor's center and with tourism, so.
Well, he's a contractor.
Yeah.
Yes, he is.
He's not an employee, he's contracted yearly with us, so.
Other questions? Thank you.
And another thing I liked about the job description is if anybody's looked at the job description, there's numerous duties this person would have, and it just goes along with what we've been trying to do with getting most all of our employees cross-trained and doing numerous jobs and being able to, which has saved a lot of money, as Derek explained, so.
I'd like to hear from Brandon, if you don't mind. Brandon asks us for so little and does what he does so well that I'm always interested when he is able to speak, so.
So I am fully in support of this position. When I came on County Attorney's Office, I started a Facebook page and a Twitter page. That being said, we're so busy, I haven't had much time to put much content on it. So, but if you look around at district attorneys and county attorneys' offices across the nation, that's an important thing. We want to be very transparent to the public. We want the public to know what we're doing, what their tax dollars are going for, and ways we can keep them safe. I've used my Facebook page and Twitter in the past for my other offices and my past jobs to try to put out their convictions on high-profile cases that I think that the public would be concerned about. Also, just the other day, I did post something on our Facebook page here. It's the "You Drink, You Drive, You Lose" campaign is going on right now. And so obviously, that's something that our office greatly supports. So I put that out there to let people know that right now, we're going to be doing enforced enforcement. The problem I have is I don't have enough time. I really, there's a lot of things I think I would like to be able to put this stuff on there, but I'm going to court, I'm charging people who are in custody, I'm reviewing search warrants for police officers. So I would think this position would be able to help me put our message out there and be more transparent to the public. So that's what I look at it for, is maybe someone who can, and then also tie all of, like, I'm doing my own Facebook and Twitter page. It's not really in conjunction with anyone else. And I think as a county, it'd be nice to have a consistent message, inconsistent, I guess, format, theme across the county that would make us, give us, I guess, more exposure and show like what Derek said, what the public, what their tax dollars are going for. I think it's, the public needs to know what we're doing, the hard work we're doing, and the things that we're doing with their money and the way we're trying to save their money. And so I think it'd be an opportunity for that. I would say, obviously, our office is way too small to have a public information officer, but in some of the bigger DA offices, I know, for example, Sedgwick County, within their own, that own department, they have a person who, that's their full-time job, is to be a public information officer. Clearly, we don't have the personnel, the staff, anything to do something like that. But so this person would be able to help do that job for us, and we could all share that person. I just think it's a good thing. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon. And he touched on something important that I didn't bring up. If he doesn't have time to do it. David Lee doesn't have time to do it. Mitch Ransum doesn't have time to do it. Radcliffe doesn't have time to do it. Brandon doesn't, and so on and so forth. If this were a position, if I thought for a second that this were something that my staff could do effectively without having to sacrifice one of their other duties, I would not be here. And I think my track record over three years proves that. This is the first staff member that we have asked to add. We're down six. So from when we started doing this in sixteen, the county is down six employees. And I wouldn't be asking to add one of those back if I didn't feel like it was really the most effective way to do this and continue to provide the same level of services that we are.
Timelines, got an idea on when to, want to get started with the interviews and process?
HR is ready to go. I've got them on standby, ready to post this, probably post it. Typically, we post for a couple of weeks. We'll have interviews set up shortly thereafter, and hopefully, we have some good candidates and can make a decision. I mean, it's conceivable that we have an agreement in place within a month, I would say, so.
I have a thirty-something son who was a city commissioner. When I, when you first put this out here, that you were thinking about hiring a position, a communications director, and I sent them to him, and he was like, awesome, that's great. And then when we decided maybe not to do it, you know, but, you know, as young people, it's all about getting, you know, they aren't going to read the paper necessarily. They're out there on Facebook and Twitter and, yeah. And if, and that's a good part of our constituents, so yes, definitely.
Any more comments on this?
Yeah, I had to admit, come out with you, Rick, I wasn't totally convinced at first either. I had a long discussion with Derek and discussed it, and he was graciously took what I had to say as good things, not bad things. And I know, I feel that do need some help out there, and maybe not as much help as being able to relieve the top end of the job so the other things can get done. And being able to utilize our transient tax to make that happen, too. But I also made the statement, I've always said this one, I'll keep saying it, that this is, I feel, is a position that could help promote the tourism things that are going on in the county even more. But I think we need to do our part financially also. I don't feel the dollar amount that we allow to those organizations. And I wasn't in here when that all turned hand, but I heard compensation from this board. They want to see more of that money go to those organizations to promote tourism for the county. And I feel this position and allowing a little more financing to go to those deals could make it really move forward instead of just sitting there.
I'd just say, seems like whenever you talk about communications, it kind of goes immediately down the rabbit hole of social media, somewhat logically, because it's seen as the future, and it is certainly popular now. But communications position would be much more than that as the outward face of our organization. It's how we give out information. Half of communication is also listening. This person will be out gathering information and, which would help us. But I guess that's the other equation, the other side of the coin when it comes to communications.
Yeah, and I.
Yeah, so I was skeptical at first, like some of the other commissioners, when I first heard about this. And I went out and talked to some of the department heads and asked them, how would this help you? And just like Derek said, it would relieve, and like Brandon Jones said, relieve them so they could do their job better and also get the word out what's going on in the county in a positive way. Then I heard about being over tourism, and I became more and more favorable about this position. I think it would really work for the county to include this position.
And I see this as a position that's going to become increasingly common. And several counties have them, but, you know, another way of looking at it is, you know, at here, ten, fifteen years ago, a lot of counties didn't have HR departments. Well, why do you need an HR department? Why can't the clerk, or why can't each department process their own payroll? Why can't they? And then obviously, we, you know, we, HR departments are created, and it's like, how in the world did these organizations ever exist without HR? And I think as we continue to move forward, we're going to see that same transition with communications because it's so easy to communicate now through so many mediums that I just see this as, you know, we're out ahead of it a little bit. But I've said from the get-go, that's the side of the curve I want to be on. I want to be leading the transitions. I don't want to be, you know, stuck in the past and, you know, grinding to get little changes made. Evid, will you talk just a bit about what you perceive to be some benefits?
I, too, am very much in favor of this position. I spend a lot of my day talking with folks, visiting them at their property, that sort of thing. But I am not even scratching the surface of getting the word out, communicating with folks. So the way I see it, this position has the opportunity to increase awareness, increase engagement, provide access, establish transparency, and reinforce credibility. These are things that other communities are doing, and that's their focus. For me, personally, there's communications within the department that I would like to see more of to make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on. There's website updates. I'm not sure our website is updated all that frequently. I would like to have. I'm not sure our website is updated all that frequently. I would like to have information posted on there related to, to snow events, flash flood precautions, road maintenance policies. The list goes on and on, on and on. At some point, I'd like to do a strategic plan for the, the Public Works Department, and that's going to take employee, or citizen engagement. Having somebody to help with that would be really important. It's also about proactive storytelling. It's about, uh, leading the conversation regarding the decisions that we make, the actions that we take, and the issues that we encounter. It's about getting that message out so that folks truly understand the scope of what it is that we do. We have, you know, eleven hundred miles of road, I've said that a thousand times here, and twenty-two hundred miles of, of right-of-way that we have to do, deal with. We're not able to be everywhere at once, and, and so, being able to have somebody else to help share that story to, to, with the concentration on, on helping us get the message out and, and, and be a conduit for that, uh, for that proactive storytelling. From the road and bridge standpoint, giving more information and updates on construction projects, road closures, weather events, major project updates, all of those things are important to the public. I don't think we do a very good job of, of getting the word out. That's not to say that we don't try, but, you know, we have, we're focused elsewhere. Uh, and sometimes that takes a backseat to, to, to trying to correct the issue. And the solid waste division, that's a, that's a group that is, kind of quietly operates in the background. You don't hear much out of them. But if we promote those services that, that we provide, we have an opportunity to increase awareness and increase usage and, and therefore possibly increasing revenue for those, those services. So, I think all of those things are positive. From a general county standpoint, we, we've, we've, some of these folks have already touched on it, but it's, uh, creating a cohesive county communication strategy. Having a, uh, a story that, that we share with folks that, that is not vastly different from department to department. Uh, our focus is to serve the citizens, and we do it in different ways, but that message could be more clear. Working with service clubs, the Chamber of Commerce, both in Ottawa and Wellsville, could be something that, that that person helps with. FCDC, we have a thirty million dollar industrial park that we're in the process of building. FCDC, they are all about marketing and, and, and helping to lure folks here and then keep businesses in the county as well. Having somebody with a, a communication background, a marketing background, will help strengthen FCDC, to be able to reach out and use that resource. So, I, I can't think of too many downsides for this position. It, it's maybe a little bit unique for a county our size at this point in time. But the, uh, the, the benefits of this far outweigh any, any negatives. For me personally, I have a lot of what I think are, are good ideas to share with the public, but I have more pressing things that I've got to take care of. So, that often takes a backseat. And so, having somebody there to, uh, to help, help me get the word out and to educate folks and, and to take information in. I, I think, uh, I, I look forward to the opportunity to work with this person.
Okay. Well, all commissioners have had a chance to, to comment. If there's nothing else, Derek, I would look for a motion to approve adding a communications director position and hiring for the same. Have a motion to second?
Second.
Motion to second, Jen.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, takes us to staff reports, Derek?
Yeah, we haven't talked about the tax sale in a few weeks. That is still, um, we're still seeing people redeem their properties, so that's good. Um, we've sent out our second notice, currently working with Croucher to have some title work prepared. I've said this several times, but the intention is to have those Cove's properties up in North Ottawa on this tax sale, so certainly. I think the City of Ottawa is working with their Bond Council on solutions to make those properties more viable for development. You'd have to talk with them for more details on that, but I know that we're all cautiously optimistic that, that those properties will be able to be put to productive use. So, I think this sale will be very important in that regard. Working with Brandon a lot recently on, um, you know, creating a schedule for these projects. We're, we're excited about that. I think, uh, so many of these things have been so long overdue, and, and it will be nice to be able to have it done. And Brandon, you ask anyone, Brandon's a rock star, and, and so, we'll, we'll have a plan to stay up on our maintenance so that we're not in this position again. Janet and I will ensure that our reserve balances stay where they need to be. Just excited for this transition, really excited generally with where we're at at the county. So, uh, we have a joint lunch with the city today, I believe is at the city. Um, that's all I have.
Brandon, you have anything else to add? Joanne?
Uh, just want to give you a quick update, because it's pretty exciting. We are on track. Still, I've talked about this a few times. If we can get through the next two weeks, we're on track to file for accreditation for the Franklin County Communications Center, so. That's exciting. Everybody's really tense right now. I hope that everything goes good, but we're, we're, we've made it almost to six months with, uh, meeting the scores. With that, I got a, uh, phone call from the state, uh, Next Gen 911. We, uh, they've been looking at map servers for the, uh, the state hosted solution. It's a closed solution. That's, uh, something we can't get into. But with that, they looked at a, a company called Rapid, uh, Rapid Response to do that. I, I tell you this because we are going to be a pilot program for the rollout with that. So, we were one of the last to go on the, uh, Next Gen 911. We're going to be one of the first to get a go on the, the new mapping solution. So, that tells you that we're, uh, doing the right thing in the state and, and moving up.
Well, and I don't want to pause him there, because I want to make sure that that gets emphasized. Like, that, that is indicative of such a massive transition and proactivity and culture. Literally, one of the last to adopt the state system, but now, we are one, I mean, they're reaching out. They want us to be one of the first to, to pilot this new, new system. So, that's, you know, I'm very happy with how that's went as well, and, and Nick certainly deserves credit for that.
Thank you. And the thing that I do want to, want to talk about, because this is probably the most exciting thing I get to tell you today, is as of September, if everything continues to go to, also, we have reached full staffing with our full-ten dispatchers. So, we're going to implement, we have been running with nine, so we've had the ten-to-ten position that we talked about in the budget here in Goin', and they've seen great success with having a few people in there in those peak times. Our last dispatcher comes off orientation in the first part of, of September, actually, right around the tractor show area. So, we're going to get to see that benefit. So, we have, if all goes well, successfully filled dispatch. On the EMS side, I don't have a whole lot. Our ambulance is back, uh, from remount, so we are running full staffed on that. And my crews hit me up the other day, and I want to tell you guys thank you. I know a couple of years ago, the board was on, that was here, we bought the bariatric equipment. That bariatric equipment has seen a lot of use, and from what, uh, we've been looked at, it's, we helped Anderson County out with it. We've been called a couple of times to Coffee County, didn't, they ended up not needing us, but they called to set up transfers, so we have been able to utilize that. And I was fully, I'm excited. We, we have a person that we do transport quite often, and they came from another state. And were transported by those EMS agencies, and they, they sing praises of the equipment that we have. It makes their transport easier and everything. So, you know, I want to thank you guys for supporting us and getting that equipment for us, because it has been a great asset. So, not a whole lot going on, but wanted to pass that on.
Midge, you have anything?
Actually, just have a quick request. So, we are in the middle of planning the Health in All Policies Summit for November. And one of the pieces of that summit will be a panel, and it should be an interactive opportunity where various policies and their, their, and examination of health implications is, um, is, uh, created among the whole constituency, whoever's in attendance. One of the things that we have to put into the planning are the issues, particular issues that are of interest to community members and to you, uh, as governing officials. So, what I'm actually asking is for ideas of different things you feel or that you hear in the community that might work well into the Health in All Policies discussions. So, um, you know, putting a new road through honestly can create health implications. That's just an example. Environmental impacts of certain things is an example of considerations of health on, uh, on the wind farm discussion, for example. But, um, what would be most beneficial as we plan this is to know what the community members and what you think would be, create an interesting discussion. So, as you're going through, uh, talking to people, if you have ideas, I would appreciate knowing those. And, and anybody in the community that hears this, I'd appreciate knowing that, so. Thank you.
Alan?
Just want to give you a couple of updates. Uh, as you know, we have a FEMA federal disaster that the date ended. It started in, uh, end of April, ended the middle of July, continuing to work that. They did add some extra counties. We're now up to seventy counties in the state that are included in that disaster. I talked with, uh, the state public assistance folks just last week. Um, it's going to take a little time for them to get around all seventy counties, uh, so don't expect to check anytime this year. Uh, one of the things that I know is very challenging, and I've heard it in some of the commission meetings, and I really feel kind of sorry for the Public Works folks with us getting four and five inches of rain every week. Uh, we got hit again last week, uh, in the county, different areas, but with that being said, it's some of the same areas that have already been repaired. So, uh, that's kind of a struggle for us to keep those, uh, parts that have been repaired under the disaster separated from the ones that aren't covered. Um, I don't believe, uh, as you know, we had flooding here two or three weeks ago that really impacted the City of Ottawa in the north part of the county. That part is not going to be included in a, uh, federal declaration at this point. So, that's something that will be on us and the city to cover. With that being said, uh, there's a couple of things that are coming up that our department's working on. Nick mentioned it just a little bit, the power of the past. Tractor Show comes in, uh, next month. We're, uh, in planning meetings with them, and we do a plan. Uh, make sure that we have a severe weather plan and evacuation plan in place in Forest Park, uh, in case that event is needed, and then also the car show. And we are supporting the, uh, city on that event, and I believe, uh, from the planning meetings, the actual command post is going to be run out of our emergency operations center on the third floor for that night. So, we've got the equipment in there where we can do that, uh, to work this year, so I'm really excited about that. One of the things that we've done too, and I didn't hear Nick brag on himself, so I'm going to brag on him. We started about three or four months ago, uh, emergency management and communications and our dispatch centers talking to all the counties around us about interoperability and communications. Um, we've realized with our new radio system that not all the counties have the same radio system as we do, and we can't talk to them when we go outside the county. Uh, believe it or not, almost on a daily basis, we've got, uh, county, uh, agencies that are outside of the county doing their job. So, we are working, we meet monthly, uh, with the other counties, the other dispatch centers, and have communications, uh, meetings and ideas on how we can communicate on the radios and just policies and procedures between dispatch centers. And I think that's a great benefit for us. We want to have something in place so that, uh, when that event happens or that emergency happens, we don't have to say, "Well, what are we going to do now?" We already have it in place and know what to do, and the dispatchers are trained on that. Um, also, uh, we have talked with Lyon County. Lyon County is, uh, considering, if they haven't already signed the contract, they're going to be on the state eight-hundred radio system. And Miami County just contacted us. I know, Don, you talked to me, uh, before the meeting, so Miami County is looking at that. Anderson County has some of our radios that they're testing their area, and they're considering doing that too, which it will benefit Franklin County in the long run, because everybody will be on that. Um, we're also in discussions with Douglas County right now to add additional equipment at one of our tower sites up at Wellsville to bring it up to full capacity, which will also help Douglas County. And will help us in the long run, because we've talked to them about a backup dispatch center up there for us in case we need to evacuate our center. So, it'll be a win-win situation, and these will be th, uh, things that we'll probably be bringing to you in the near future, I hope. Also, one last thing. October twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, we have a three-day county exercise that you are invited to attend. There may be some policy questions that come in on that exercise. The, uh, Regional Homeland Security Council is funding the exercise, and a, uh, state incident management team will be here to work with the county EOC. And that's part of the, the reason for it, is it'll be a city-county, uh, exercise, and there will be interaction between the state incident management team and our county EOC for those three days. So, you are invited to attend that.
Does he have anything else?
Okay, so as Alan mentioned, we had another, another storm this end of last week. Thursday night into Friday morning, there was quite a bit of, uh, wind damage and whatnot down in the, kind of the southern part of the county. We had folks, uh, we got called out. I think the first call was around two-thirty Friday morning. And so, we had folks out in the area helping to clear trees and, and debris starting about then. As soon as folks arrived for work that morning, we sent the vast majority of our available folks to that part of the county to, uh, start removing trees from the right-aways. Fallen and were blocking traffic. And so, we sent as many folks as we could with chainsaws and trucks and, and our bucket truck and the whole, the whole nine yards. Whenever we got the roads cleared, we sent some of those folks into the City of Lane to help them. They had, uh, a number of trees and, and other large debris down. They're still trying to deal with their, their water issue, uh, so we, we helped out, and, uh, quite frankly, the, there's a lot of citizens out there working as well. So, we helped them, uh, get the roads open back up. Uh, there was a few power lines that were down, uh, and so, uh, the power company came in to take care of those. But we did assist with, uh, tree removal. And then Friday night into Saturday, some parts of the, the county up north received another five inches of rain. And so, again, we're, we're dealing with, uh, additional flooding and, and poor road issues. Over the last couple of days, we've taken a large number of calls from, uh, citizens that are, that are out there dealing with these poor, uh, road conditions. I greatly appreciate the folks taking the time to, to contact us and let us know what's going on out there. Uh, I want to assure everyone that eventually we will take care of each and every one of the, of the issues. Uh, it's just going to take some time. So far, we've had over eighteen hundred work orders, uh, that we have submitted related to the flood, so that we can keep track of everything. That's both, you know, internal work orders that we create, plus the calls that we get from, from citizens, so we are steadily working through those. We're not always taking the time to, to make things a hundred percent, uh, correct in these issues, these, these locations. We are, our, our priority is to make sure that the center of the road is, uh, passable, that folks can get safely down the road. And then we'll move to the- And then we'll move to the, the road edges and then to the ditches. This is, this is going to take a, a long time. As I mentioned before, the, the number of miles, uh, road miles that we have and ride over miles, uh, i- it's a, it's a huge un- undertaking and it's going to be time consuming to do. Um, I, we recognize that, um, you know, the ditches play an important part of the, the health of our county road system. But until people can drive down the center of the road, it doesn't make sense for us to get into the ditches, especially when they're as wet as they are. Um, and so we will take care of those as quickly as possible. Uh, we're looking at the possibility of using outside resources where it's feasible and cost effective. But honestly, there's no silver bullet to make these road issues go away, uh, um, to correct all the road damage in this county quickly. It's just not going to happen. We're going to be working on this recovery into next year and, and maybe beyond. Um, and that's the same thing that Osage County, Douglas County, Miami County, Anderson County and Coffee County. Everybody around us is dealing with the same things to, to some degree or another. We are doing our very best and we will continue to do so. But I just ask folks to, you know, let us know if there's a serious issue and, and feel free to remind us that we haven't gotten to their road yet. But eventually we will. We're still jumping around to take care of these hotspots. The blade operators, uh, are not able to just blade mile after mile like, uh, we would in ordinary times because we have so many washouts, so many driveway issues, so many, uh, uh, road cuts where the water is washed across the road, coming out of fields that, uh, even if our ditches were, uh, a hundred percent clean, uh, with no rock and, and were deep and, and no edges, uh, the, the amount of water that we're talking about that we've dealt with this year, our ditches, mo- the vast majority of our ditches just, they're not able to hold that kind of water. So, um, uh, but it's all, it all builds on each other and makes the situation worse. Uh, so we're addressing these things, uh, as quickly as we can. Again, I, I would ask folks to, uh, to continue to reach out to us and, 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 uh, not lose hope that, uh, we, we're working as hard as we can, as fa- quickly as we can. Off of flood-related things, uh, Highway 59 and Kingman Road is going to start on Monday morning. Unless we have some sort of weather event that would prevent them, but that's what they're scheduled to mobilize and begin work out there. Happy to answer any questions, uh, that you may have.
Janet?
Um, just a couple of things. Um, you have a thank you card coming down. I hope all of you got to see that, um, from the Richmond Fair. So they always, um, appreciate what you guys do for them down there. Um, one other thing, we received a letter in the mail from K Camp and they're seeking nominations, um, to, um, replace some board of trustee members. Um, coming up at the November, uh, annual meeting that they have. Uh, they need those recommendations by August 30th, so that's coming up here really quick. And so we just wanted to bring this to you guys, um, so we might be able to consider, um, someone from, from our area. Um, David Lamb is currently the president and he's the Lynn County clerk and he's going to be going off. Ed Harbin from Ellis County is a sheriff and he's going to be going off. And then someone from Stanton County who is a commissioner going off. Um, this position can be held by any elected official in the county. So currently on, on this board are, is made up of county clerks, county commissioners and one sheriff that's, like I said, is going to be going off. So I'd just like you guys to take into consideration, you know, if you want to nominate someone, um, from our county or from our area for this.
KC Executive Board?
This is K Camp.
Oh, insurance, sorry. We also going to have to replace ours on KC board too, because Bob Roberts is be going, Rob Roberts will be going off of that.
I would recommend that we really consider someone. I would be all over it if I were eligible, but I'm not an elected official. I would. I'm being serious about that. Um, I think our, our, having a greater understanding of K Camp's policy and how they set their rates and I just, I think there could be a number of advantages to having somebody potentially on that board and, and I'm.
Could you check and see if there's any exemptions to that elected official position? Is there any possibilities there?
Janet, would you consider?
Possibly.
Every now and then we have unfilled, uh, township positions. Maybe Derek could be a township.
Unfortunately, you have to live in that township.
Of course, he lives in Lawrence.
But I like your thinking. I, I, you know what? I have a vacancy, uh, on a cemetery board. You don't have to live in that area. So I'm thinking maybe that's right in his alley.
Uh, you think you might be interested in it? Might be willing to.
I know some people who are on this board, so I, I've never talked to them about it, um, at any length, so I would talk to them.
Well, I do think it'd be good at this point to add some representation on there. We haven't for a long time. We've been a longtime member, but, um.
Basically, your duty is just be at the conferences meeting or?
Um, I do know, um, I, I did have talked to David about this a little bit, um, just through some other conversations. And like I said, he's the president right now and he's going off. They do have a national conference they go to, but K Camp pays for that completely. There's no cost to the county for going to the conferences. And so there are a couple of things a year they do, um, as a board. So I definitely will want to find out what the time constraints are on that and make sure that it act anything that I do negatively. I wouldn't think that it does since, um, the Lynn County clerk is on there, um, the Hodgman County clerk is on there and the Gary County clerk. So I, and, and they are all three, um, very respected, um, people in, in our clerk community. So I would think that it would, so I'll definitely check with them.
All right. Uh, takes us to commissioner comments and board reports. You weren't finished, Janet?
Yep.
Don, you want to start?
Uh, I didn't have any county deal, but this kind of is in a way, odd way. I know Susan contacted me a while, about a week or two ago about, uh, Car Club, uh, doing a promotion deal with the downtown town organizations. You know, we do our check-ins on Saturday out there. They wanted to be able to use our organization to partner with them to promote town, downtown even more. Uh, give away some discount coupons and different things. And so I agreed to go to their executive board meeting the other night and, uh, they have approved it. We, they're fine with it, with no problem at all, that, uh, that, uh, they would be allowed to hand out. They just didn't, I think, like I told them, I think she could have done it anyhow, but I think she had the, the forethought. Why not ask them? Why cause any issues? And they have no problem with it. And I might bring up a little bit on it, uh, being there. Of course, it's a year-long process putting that all together. Uh, right about 900 cars right now. And normally we only figure about half at September 1th because half of the people do it afterwards. They, they'd rather pay that other $5. They're not sure whether they're, they're coming. They look for the weather and anything. But I can tell you, they're not looking for motel rooms because they're all booked. They're even booked, I was told that there's a brand new one and the Gardner is booked also for that weekend. So, you know, so it'd, it'll be, and I kind of bring that up. There's a lot of orange shirts working out here on the grounds at the new motel, so I hope that's a good sight. I went by the other day and there's about 20 of them out there, all of them with orange shirts on, so they stand out pretty good. So I hope that, that's a good thing. I hope, you know, that they're moving forward. We could fill her up next year with no problems, so.
Been driving county roads. I don't have any meetings. Weeks kind of blur together, but, uh.
I, uh, last Friday I attended the Chamber Coffee for the, uh, Optimist Club. Um, you know, that's a great worthwhile service organization that has an emphasis towards youth and, uh, serving their community. So, um, the good news was that we did not meet at 6:30 like they usually do. And, but they actually have three different clubs. They have one, the 6:30 Breakfast Club, but they also have a noon club. And they have a newer, uh, called that meets in Wellsville. So if anybody was interested in, in joining a, a good service community, uh, service organization, that would be great. Yesterday I went to the, Monday I went to the, uh, study session of the Ottawa, um, Commission. Some of the things that they were dealing with, they're going to annex some land. Um, mo- uh, most of it is out by the, uh, New Proximity Park. They are, they had some updates on the Don Woodward Center. They're having to decide what they're going to do with that because of the flooding that they've had there, uh, Proximity Park update, Legacy, Leg- Legacy Square update. Um, they talked about maybe setting some, uh, parameters for, at the airport for if a business wanted to lease land out there for an, uh, aviation, um, business on what, what the requirements would be. And then just some news that came to me this week, Janice Lee, longtime, uh, Sheriff's Department employee that we just honored this summer, uh, with her retirement, her husband passed away.
I went to, uh, ECAN board meeting last night and, uh, we reviewed the audit and it came back, uh, very good shape with the ECAN. Kind of wrapping up a lot of things. Uh, they operate like the federal level from October to October. And they're, uh, pretty well, you know, everything's going good at ECAN. Had a little trouble down at Woodward Center, had a lot of files and records and, uh, damage down there from the flooding. And, uh, they've pretty well managed it. They're moving most of the stuff up to the, uh, main office here on Ash Street. And talked a little bit about Head Start and they're serving about 400, uh, kids, uh, in the Head Start program throughout, throughout the system. And that's, that's, uh, the main items at ECAN. Just like to say, I, I attended the, uh, Farm Bureau Annual Meeting last Wednesday night and, and thanks to my ancestors, uh, we survived 150 years out there on the farm and we've got a 150-year plaque. So I'm not 150 years old, but, uh, just about, but, uh, it's many due to my ancestors that kept the farm going on all those years, so.
Um, yesterday I attended, uh, FCDC had a study session still in the process of trying to, to get a director. We met and, uh, talked about that. We'll be meeting again next Tuesday. That process is ongoing. Uh, that's the only meetings I've been to. I do have a comment I want to make. I normally don't do this on the public comments, but I think the comment today deserves a comment from us. It stated that someone came in last week, uh, to talk about their roads and they were brushed off and told to take their problems elsewhere. Uh, that's not true. Uh, anybody that has come in that I've seen, since I've been up there with a legitimate problem or concern, uh, we deal with it, we talk about it. They may be told to go to, um, one of the departments or to Derek and talk to them about it, but it's dealt with. They're not brushed off. They're not told to go elsewhere. I've heard David numerous times tell people that has concerns on their roads and so forth and meet with him after the meeting. And, uh, he'll, he'll get the area and get to it as, as they can. So I just wanted to, to put that out there that, uh, since I've been here, I have not seen anybody with a legitimate concern or a problem brushed off when they come in here and, and talk about something. So that's, uh, we do have the, uh, joint luncheon today at noon. We have a commission meeting next Wednesday. If there's nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Got it.
Have a motion as a second. All in favor?
Aight.
All opposed? We're adjourned.